What they're going to be doing to public education is going to be horrendous.
It is.
Just horrendous.
That's exactly it. Yep, that's.
Head?
Hello.
Saved that seat for you.
I didn't say that. I knew they were going fast.
Well. Next month you'll have to come earlier.
Oh yeah, next month it'll be all. I really think it's going to be horrendous only. You really think she's going to have it all? I don't think he is. Not from things I've heard.
Yes.
I don't hear from him. Am I in the right spot? Sorry, I can start it just in case. I should start the interviews pretty soon on, but I haven't seen anything yet that they're starting them.
You know, you just went by yourself right now.
Yeah, but then I think what he's going to do is, I think he splits, so you get each answer the same time. I think, that's all.
Okay, at 6:00 PM, we'll call our meeting in order. We'll start with the ledgers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a vote on this morning?
Here.
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 Hey Green, first item on our agenda is comments from citizens and delegations. Do we have any to me? Okay, thank you. We can move on to our student senate report. Madeline, how are you doing this month?
Um, so we had a number of students compete at the state deaf conference two weeks ago, I think, and twenty-seven of them qualified for the international conference, which will be in April at, in Atlanta, Georgia. We had state testing last week for the juniors. They took the ACT and the seniors did a reality check, which is like a financial simulation where they go through and pretend they have to have all the finances for a day, which was pretty eye-opening. The Fire and Ice Dance was, which had been moved till last weekend, took place, and so we had a spirit week in the dance. Spring sports are just starting, so some of them have started already, like track, and some will start in the coming weeks. We had a number of winter sport athletes be recognized and some of the wrestlers even placed at the state competition. And, um, I think we just started our third try.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, we can move on to the final minutes.
I would make a motion that the regular board of education meeting minutes of February fourteenth and the special board of education meeting close session of February twenty-second be approved as printed.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second to approve the regular board of education meeting minutes of February fourteenth and the special board of education meeting close session minutes of February twenty-second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Moving to committee reports. Ed services.
Okay, thanks, John. The Ed Services Committee held its monthly meeting on March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no public comment, and there were three consent agenda items. Does anyone wish any of these held out? All right then, with that, I will begin with our actionable items. The first one was girls hockey cooperative team contract. You know, the committee recommends and I move to approve ES one. And the girls hockey cooperative team encompassed the school districts of Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools, Marshfield, Stevens Point, Assumption, Pachelli, Athens, Spencer, Wapaka, Iola Scandinavia, and Amherst. The co-op agreement expires at the end of the two thousand and twenty-one school year, and a new one will need to be approved by each school district's board for the program to continue. And I move to approve that, the girls hockey cooperative agreement with Marshfield, Stevens Point, Assumption, Pachelli, Athens, Spencer, Wapaka, Iola Scandinavia, and Amherst for school years two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four be approved as printed. And next was the summer school proposals. Due to changes made in the high school science department curriculum, adjustments in summer offerings were necessary in order for students to take remedial coursework and earn required science credits toward graduation. Two new courses have been developed, Lab Methods in Physics and Chemistry and Lab Methods in Biology and Geoscience, which will offer an opportunity for students to make up required credits during the summer and stay on course to graduate. So I move to approve the Lab Methods in Physics and Chemistry and Lab Methods in Biology and Geoscience summer school courses as presented. And then, uh, next was ES three. And that was, uh, let's see here. New course offerings have been developed for the middle school level in the areas of orchestra and band. The jumpstart program is designed to help sixth grade students gain essential fundamental skills using an instrument they have selected. The kickstart program is designed to help mitigate learning loss, which can occur over summer break. And with that, I move to approve the orchestra jumpstart, kickstart program and band jumpstart, kickstart program summer school courses beginning in August, two thousand and twenty-two.
I approve your motion.
Okay, we have a motion is second to approve ES one, two, and three. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. Those motions carry.
All right, and then we have three updates. First one, AGR mid-year report. Roxy and, Roxy Phillips and Jen Wilharn provided an overview of the district achievement gap reduction report. The information in the report is from the end of the first trimester only and doesn't reflect second trimester progress since the second trimester just ended on March third, two thousand and twenty-two. The inconsistencies caused by the pandemic during the two thousand and twenty-one school year, coupled with disruptive learning in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, has contributed to lower screener scores. Despite the challenges presented by the pandemic, for students and staff, learning continues to flourish and all resources are being utilized to address lost learning opportunities. Second trimester data is being gathered, and an update can be provided to committee members once it becomes available. The administration expressed confidence that final mid-year and end of year will reflect continued student success and growth. And next, we had a mid-year reading and math screener's report. The percentage of elementary students scoring in the fortieth percentile and above using nationally normed screeners is trending upward. The percentage of students scoring below the tenth percent is decreasing, which is a positive trend. In mathematics, the cut scores are trending upward in a positive direction. The change in elementary math curriculum hasn't had a significant impact on student scores as a result of it being new, and the downward trend of urgent math interventions being needed is a promising sign of student growth. Teachers are working collaboratively in professional learning groups to help one another learn and implement the new curriculum, which shows early indicators of being a positive change. Middle school students have experienced growth across all levels in the English language arts and content area. The results overall are promising, considering that students are adjusting back to normal instruction after the cohort delivery model that occurred during the majority of the two thousand and twenty-one school year. At the high school level, scores for students taking the winter reading inventory screener are in the proficient or advanced categories as follows. Sixty-one percent of ninth grade, seventy-one percent of tenth grade, eighty percent of eleventh grade, and seventy-four percent of twelfth grade. With regard to math, scores for students who took the winter STAR math screener scored at above, at or above benchmark as follows. Fifty-eight percent of ninth grade, sixty-four percent of tenth grade, forty-nine percent of eleventh grade, and forty-two percent of twelfth grade. It is difficult to determine specific growth based on this screener due to the lack of all students' testing and the trimester schedule involved. And at last, Roxy did commend the hard work and dedication of classroom teachers and district interventionists to implement the district curriculum and help each student gain grade level mastery in math and reading content areas. And our last one, industry-recognized credentials report on district report card. The two thousand and twenty, twenty-one WRPS district report card has a section to report grades nine through twelve student participation in post-secondary categories, including a category titled industry-recognized credentials. Unfortunately, this data was not collected from Lincoln High School and reported as it should have been. Since this information has no bearing on the district report card score, it will not be updated by the Department of Public Instruction. The district has received a letter of confirmation dated July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one from the DPI, confirming that a four-point-five percent of, sixty-eight students earned the credential, which compares to an overall one-point-four percent, state-level percentage. And with that, I would move to approve the Educational Services Committee meeting minutes of May, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two be approved.
Second.
We have a motion is second to approve the regular committee meeting minutes of the Educational Services Committee of March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome, John.
Next, we'll move into business service. John?
Thank you, John. Business services met on March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, and our meeting was called in order at six-twenty-four. We had no public comment. Out of our meeting, we had eight actionable items, of which does anybody wish to have one held out?
I'd like three held out.
ES three. Okay, we'll do that one at the end. So the committee recommends and I move the approval of the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative, sixty-six oh three oh one agreement. This is an agreement we've been doing for a number of years. Elizabeth Mezoli, our food director, likes to continue with this because there are fifty-six districts involved in this, so the buying power is immense. The cost of this is three hundred dollars, and I always say it's the best three hundred dollars we spend because of the several hundred thousand dollars we save because of the best pricing we can get. Along with, just happened to show up on the receipts this month, our rebate was ten thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and forty-three cents from this membership, from this food service group for the two thousand and twenty-one year. So we, uh, committee recommends and I move that we approve the purchasing cooperative sixty-six oh three oh one agreement for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year in the amount of three hundred dollars. BS two is the CISA five contract. Again, this is a contract we've done for multiple years. It's a contract for purchases of special education services from CISA five. Protected cost is four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. However, the actual cost will be determined based upon usage of the services. Specific services include audiology, deaf, hard of hearing, OTPT, virtually impaired, and alternative education. It's been discussed several times in the committee that there's no way in the world we could support all of these people and hire all of these people to do these services under that cost. So that's the reason we, we use CISA five contract. So the committee recommends and I move to accept the agreement proposed CISA five agreement. Oh, let's see, in the amount of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year be recommended for the approval. We're holding out BS three. BS four is a group of stuff that comes under our federal E-rate dollars, and I just want to explain for people that don't understand what the federal E-rate program is, it's something that our, Phil, our technology director goes out and does a lot of paperwork for, but this is the reason he does it, is that for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we have five hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars for twenty-two. We had sixty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars for twenty-one expenditures for a total of six hundred and twenty, twelve thousand, three seventy-eight. Of that, E-rate covers eighty percent, and the school district pays twenty percent. So out of that, six hundred and twelve thousand dollars, the school district is only paying a hundred and twenty-two thousand, four seventy-five. So these programs say that our people, our directors and our, and our school district go out and, and research and get volumes. For in Ed's, Ed's department, it's focused on energy. We get a lot of rebate dollars through the, through the focus on energy projects and, and rebate programs for energy savings. So these costs saves the school district a tremendous amount of money that we're going to have to take out of our fund ten budgets. So the rest of these, these approvals are out of the E-rate funds. Grant, starting with the Grant Elementary, this is a building that needs to be completely rewired to bring up the technology. So we're proactively replacing the wiring throughout the building so that the internet speeds and the computer tech, you know, computer use for the one-on-one, one-to-one work, work completely smooth as they're supposed to be. So the committee recommends and I move the approval contract of current technologies to rewire Grant Elementary for a total cost of forty-two thousand, seven fifty, to be funded eighty percent of the E, through the federal E-rate program and twenty percent from the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three technology and curriculum referendum budget. Then we have BS five, which is upgrading our wireless contact points, access points to the various schools. As, as the access points age, they, they start to fail, and then we lose the ability to connect with our devices with all of our cell phones and our watches and everything else that we use that's electronic in the, in the school building. I mean, there was, we were talking that there's, at points, that one person could have four devices that are connecting to our access points. So the, the school district, uh, we have to replace the wireless access points because they're not current with the eight oh two eleven and eight oh two eleven protocols. So the committee recommends and I move the approval of a purchase of a hundred and twenty Meraki wireless access points from SHI International for a total cost of sixty-one thousand, nine eighty, to be funded eighty percent by federal E-rate program and twenty percent from the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three technology and curriculum, curriculum referendum budget. Then our next one is BS six, which is a switch upgrade. Again, this has to do with the, the access points and our technology to make sure that all of our wireless devices will work in the school buildings. So the current network switches at Lincoln High School and Rams and East Central Office are having failure rates, and replacement switches are becoming difficult to secure. The technology support department would like to replace all the switches at these locations to stay current with the latest technology. A total of eighty switches will be replaced in three locations, over two-thirds of the switches in the district. The technology department uses federal E-rate dollars to do these purchases. So the committee recommends and I move that we approve the purchase of eighty Juniper switches with accessories in a three-year support and licensing bundle from FightSpeed at a total cost of four hundred and five thousand, five sixty-two, which will be funded eighty percent by E-rate program and twenty percent from the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three technology and curriculum referendum budget. BS seven is a firewall refresh. Again, this has to do with the fact that we are upgrading our program to Solaris from a one gig to a two gig program for, for the internet. And the current swi, uh, switches we have, or firewall we have, it only works up to, up to one gig. So we do have to upgrade that. So committee recommends and I move the purchase of two Fortinet, Fortnet, Fortigate firewalls and support from PDS for a total cost of thirty-six thousand, eight thirty-four oh eight, to be funded eighty percent by the federal E-rate program and twenty percent from the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three technology and curriculum referendum budget. And then our BS eight is internet access contact, and this again has to do with getting our internet. And again, we are, went out to bid through the two contractors we have, Solaris and Charter, and we picked Solaris due to the fact that they were more responsive and they have local technicians because the Charter did not have local people, and they did not give a real response rate time. So the, this, the committee recommends and I move that we approve the three-year contract with Solaris to provide two gigabytes of internet access to the district at a monthly cost of twenty-three hundred, to be funded eighty percent by the federal E-rate program and twenty percent from the two thousand and twenty-three technology budget.
John, can you say the amount of money for BS four?
BS four.
The recommendation.
Total cost of forty-two thousand, seven fifty-seven?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, we have a vote is in the second to approve BS one, two, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Do we have a vote on this morning?
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
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 Good morning. Let's go back to BS three.
Okay, so BS three, let me, I'll start with it, and then Sandy can ask. BS three is a motion to pay the balance of our video board for the quad, well, actually, that would be for the stadium project. So the motion reads to pay the remaining Woodtrust Bank loan balance for Daktranex Video Board in the amount of three hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight ninety, eight eighty-nine from the district's general fund. All sponsor and advertising revenues from the video board will be deposited into the quadplex and stadium sustainability fund. One of the reasons that we're going to look at paying this off is that the, we have found that we can get an additional state aid at approximately thirty and a half percent, which would be a hundred and nineteen thousand, five twenty-six. This, this aid would help lower the property taxes over the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school years. Basically, it's saying we can, we can use it as part of the fund ten and get money back from the state if we, if we do do this. And that will be a savings that we would never realize and would have to pay out of our pockets, so it's a hundred and ninety, a hundred and nineteen thousand we get back. It will also save us future investment payments of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. The district will still receive sponsor and advertising revenues, which will be deposited into the quadplex and stadium sustainability fund. These additional revenues are indefinite, but that would be removed from the district's financial statement. And it will be taken out of Fund Thirty-nine?
It'd be Fund Ten transferred to Thirty-eight.
Right, to Thirty-eight. And then the district has additional funds for this school year to cover the loan repayment. That was the motion.
Okay, I have questions. First of all, basically, you know, we're transferring from Fund Ten to Fund Thirty-eight. So we're looking at paying like a three hundred, almost ninety-two thousand dollars, which is taken out of our general Fund Ten, which would be for educational purposes, and back in, where's the other piece of paper? We also took, um, we, uh, we had a shortfall a while back of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and, for the quadplex, and we were going to take that out of Fund Ten, and that, the money that it was paid back would go into a turf fund. So how many funds do we have? A, do we have a turf fund? Do we have a quad?
The quadplex sustainability fund, the turf fund, it's all the same fund.
Okay.
We don't particularly identify it or label for it, but it's for the long-term sustainability of the cost for the quad. So the thought is we're going to invest this money in twelve years from now, put it on a turf, two, three plates.
Right.
So whether it's donations or from donors or, or advertisements for that score family board to be deposited.
Okay, but right now, we're looking at, let's see, a hundred and fifty-five, close to a half a million, almost a half a million dollars coming out of Fund Ten to sustain the quadplex. So, um, I don't think our Fund Ten can afford that. We're going to have, when it comes to CPI, that's going to be horrendous this year, four-point-six percent, I think. I would, if, if we're going to do this, the money that is paid back, I'd like to see it go back into, in Fund Ten.
It's, 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 in the end, at the end of the day, this is all going to be on the shoulders of the school district to support these fields. So whether it's through Fund Ten or Fund Eighty, at this, with, with this, by deposit, depositing that money into the sustainability fund, it will accumulate and grow, and hopefully in twelve years from now, there will be money in that turf sustainability fund to start replacing the turf at that time.
Okay.
Now, the advantage of doing this is we will receive an additional, by paying it out of Fund Ten, the Fund Ten transferred to Fund Thirty-eight, we will receive an additional thirty-point-five percent of aid for next school year. If we deposited those donations from the donors into Fund Thirty-eight and paid out of Thirty-eight, we wouldn't receive that aid. So that's why it's advantageous for, to do this. Where, as a whole, the district's going to receive the same amount of revenue from our donors, one way or the other. It's just how we are going to be saving or investing that money.
So right now, when we see, when we look at our, um, our statements for the month, and we look at receipts, and we've had people give like five hundred dollars, ten thousand dollars, all that money right now is going into?
Well, there's, there's different funds. So let's not get the board, the scoreboard mixed up with the turf or the.
Quadplex.
The quadplex is funded through, most of it, all those donations are deposited into Fund Forty-nine. That's another fund altogether. And it's probably close to, at the end of the day, probably close to seven million dollars will be donated into that fund. And then the, you know, all the contractors that were paying, the turf company is going to be paid for with those revenues. So Fund Forty-nine is kind of a construction fund.
I'd clarify too, Sandy, that you can think of the scoreboard as a separate, as part of the stadium upgrade, of course, but as a separate thing. And that's one of the reasons why we pursued the loan on the front end, was because then we knew there would not be Fund Ten impact at a time when we weren't a hundred percent certain what that was going to look like. And secondarily, because the dollars generated to fund that scoreboard or pay for that scoreboard come in the terms of marketing and advertising. So in essence, we're not done until we've got back four hundred and ten thousand dollars, which is the cost of the scoreboard. Today, we have a common core of two hundred and seventy thousand of that four-ten. That'll come in over the next five years. That's if we do not get one more sponsor on that board, and we will.
And what fund does that go into?
So that, again, that will go to, to offset the cost of this four-ten, which would be the cost of the scoreboard, and that would be a Fund Ten number, or it could go into Fund Forty-six, I believe, depending upon circumstance. Keeping in mind that regardless of where the dollars go, they're going to be spent on what's necessary at the time. So it sounds a bit like a shell game, one could argue, right? But any revenue that comes in can be placed where it needs to be placed appropriately. Secondarily, we know we have the revenue room this year. That is not necessarily going to be true in future years. The CPI wage adjustment would, would impact us next year, not this. We did this year already. And so one could think too, that closing out this fiscal year on as positive note as possible and covering as much that we can in terms of debts and so forth will position us better. Because again, if we would have known that we would have had the dollars upfront and had really no issue with generating nearly three hundred of the four hundred and ten thousand cost of the scoreboard right away, we probably wouldn't have pursued a loan, because why would you take on the interest and make the payments? We would have paid it upfront. But that's a bit disingenuous timing-wise. If we did that several months ago, and then we come here and go, oh, it's not really looking good as far as the budget's concerned. Because of our circumstance this year, as are funds and a number of other things, we're in decent territory. So fiscally, it makes all kinds of sense to buy that down, save us twenty thousand plus in interest payments that we're not going to make, and then secondarily, get state aid on the fact that it would be spent out of this year's Fund Ten budget via transfer, but nonetheless on a Fund Ten, thereby getting this additional a hundred-plus thousand in terms of equalized state aid next year.
Okay, it must be dense, but then the money that, the revenue that's being generated from the people that do the advertising on the scoreboard.
Yep.
We've got two hundred and ten thousand, right, what, pledged right now supposedly?
Two seventy.
Two seventy?
Yep.
Okay, when those payments are made, are they going to Fund Ten? Are we going to go Thirty-eight or what?
I, I was working with the auditor, and he's recommending at this time to place those monies in Fund Eighty. And the reason it's kind of a community service type field or whatever, and as we are, rent this facility out, that's where probably the best fit, where those advertisement, or not advertisement, field usage revenues would go.
And keep in mind, we're talking about the stadium versus the quadplex too.
Right, right. I'm talking about the, the scoreboard.
Right, but if we, any revenue generated from the scoreboard, as an example, would likely be invested into the stadium to replace that turf, because when the time comes, twelve years from now, give or take, when that turf needs to be redone and we need to come up with, you know, dollars, clearly, we're going to go back to individuals that were interested in marketing and so forth, opportunities at the time, but we'll need some dollars district-wise to, to likely replace that turf as well. So the stadium and score, you can think of it as basically three separate things. The stadium is one thing, the scoreboard's the second thing, and then the quadplex being the third thing, up which is the most, you know, most, excuse me, most involvement. But as an example, once the scoreboard pays for itself, which based on our numbers here, again, we're, we're going to get there, then those dollars can be generated and placed towards whatever we deem appropriate. One would argue it's likely going to go towards maintenance and upkeep of that turf stadium field, thinking that we may have a very generous donor come forward again with three-quarters of a million dollars, but we may not. And we might have, you know, five donors that each donate a hundred thousand. We don't know what the future holds. But the idea would be that we're not sitting in a circumstance with the stadium or the quadplex that. Quadplex that we're looking around wondering, you know, how are we going to pay for this or that it's one hundred percent, or even a large percentage of the district's problem. The scoreboard, our primary concern is having it to cover the cost, which we're going to get there, because again, we've got two-seventy of four-ten accounted for in five years. And then when those dollars come in, we'll place them in the appropriate account based upon where the money is best used. So if the dollars are in Fund Forty-six as a holding pen, as it were, from revenue from the scoreboard, and we do find ten or twelve or fourteen years from now that a very generous donor is going to cover the cost of resurfacing that field yet again, then those dollars can be spent on anything else under the sun. Could be, you know, God knows at that time if it would be another building renovation or project or who knows what that would look like. So anytime we're taking in revenue, because keep in mind that our goal and obligation as a school district is really not to put money aside rainy day-wise. I mean, we want to be smart when we're doing it. But we do that too much and all of you folks recognize that that has a negative impact to taxpayers. And it goes against common sense. I understand that the state funding formula is such that we receive fifty-plus percent of our funding in terms of state aid, which is taxes nonetheless, but taxes derived from the entire state, not local property taxes. That's pot one. Pot two is our local property taxes. It makes sense that we maximize our state aid and do the best that we can to minimize our local property taxes. So even if there were a plan in which we said, okay, let's just take this three hundred thousand to pay off the scoreboard and set it aside, put it in fund balance or earmark it in Fund Forty-six, you can do that, but sometimes then there's a direct impact for doing so. And in this case, it would be, you're going to still pay the twenty-one thousand-ish in interest and you may not then get the equal, increase in equalized aid for having this spent out of Fund Ten. So the long and short of it is, we could fund it in any mechanism that we want, and when the dollars then come in in terms of revenues, they can be earmarked for whatever's appropriate, given the context of that time. Ten years from now is pretty tough to predict what we're talking about.
And I under...
We don't want to be in a position where we're left, you know, with a big funding gap for some costly things that we're taking on here in the year.
And I can see that with revenue being generated, that that's where it would go. But I just have a problem with this coming out of Fund Ten, going to Fund Thirty-eight, and then not recouping to make Fund Ten quote-unquote "whole" again. I mean, that's my heartache in that.
I understand. The impact though, Sandy, would be negligible insofar as June thirtieth, this fiscal year is done. So we can't go back. And once June thirtieth is passed, you can't go back and do any, I mean, you can do modifications to rectify your budget numbers, but you can't put money back into this year's budget. So it would be, any revenue that we receive on that that isn't by June thirtieth would be in a different fiscal year anyhow. See what I'm saying?
Okay. Then I have one other question, and I don't understand this, so that's why I'm bringing it up. We're talking about lowering property taxes for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, okay? And then if we look at, I saved all this stuff. Exhibit A, the resolution, it talks about a prepayment penalty. Are we familiar with that? It says, "In the event that the school district exercises its prepayment privilege, if any, then no such direct annual tax shall be included on the tax rolls for the prepayments made. And the amount of direct annual tax here and above leveraged shall be reduced accordingly for the year or years with respect to which said note was prepaid." So can we do that or is it saying no?
No, we can, because there isn't any prepaid penalty. We didn't have a prepaid penalty in the loan.
But it says it exercises the prepayment privilege.
Are you referring to the loan on this?
I'm referring to Exhibit A, the resolution, page two. I don't understand that, is what I'm saying.
The resolution to pay off two point three million dollars?
This was the resolution for that loan.
You're talking about the business services agenda where the resolution for the loan was?
Right, right. This is that new loan that we got where we paid fifteen thousand dollars six months ago to get. And this is on page two of the resolution. And I don't understand if you exercise your pre, we have the prepayment privilege, right? Because we can prepay it. So it's saying if we do this, da-da-da-da-da-da, and I don't understand that.
And I don't see specifically what you're looking at. If you're referring to the scoreboard, there is no payment penalty. I agree with that with Woodtrust and they're perfectly fine with us paying the principal and the amount of interest.
It doesn't say it's a penalty. It says it's a privilege, a prepayment privilege, so that you can do it. But then it seems to have tax consequences on it, and that's what I don't understand.
Where was Renan getting it?
It's not this, this.
This is from September seventh, twenty-twenty-one. This is the Exhibit A resolution. Maybe we can get a clarification next, I don't know. It's just, I said, I didn't understand it with this and then lowering property taxes for twenty-two, twenty-three.
We didn't have a prepayment penalty.
No, and I think, I think what the terminology is, without having it here in front of us, it's tough to tell you this, but, and we can clarify this for you. But I think what it's basically saying is that, look, you can't increase taxes to pay this off, which we're not doing. This is part of the budget and we have the funds available to make it whole.
Okay, I can...
Yeah, I did call Woodtrust, hey. I don't recall the name of the individual that we were working with.
So can we just have the clarif, maybe next one, clarification?
Yeah, I specifically asked the question, back then, there would be no penalty if we repaid it. Craig, you were there too. But also, just a couple of weeks ago, as I was drafting this, I called him one second time and just to confirm that if we were to pay this, he said it would just be the principal amount and the outstanding interest through the month of March.
Right. It doesn't say prepayment penalty. It says prepayment privilege, like you have the opportunity to do a prepayment.
Yeah, that allows us to prepay.
Right. But I'm saying, is there any tax consequences? This is what I don't understand, so I'll...
There wouldn't be tax consequence for a public school district. The tax consequence is only insofar as how we're spending our dollars out of Fund Ten that have an indirect, are aided under the state aid formula. But what we can do, if it suits the board, you guys can take action with that being clarified.
Can you clarify this?
Yes. That there's not a net impact to us doing this in any regard, aside from the benefits that we've outlined. There's no tax impact to the district, there's no tax impact to, well, I mean, there is, but it's in the following year and it's a positive tax impact. So, but based on similar circumstances that we'll engage in in terms of paying down and defusing some of the referendum debt that we've taken on, one would argue it's probably a similar sort of proposal. So we'll get that clarified. If you wanted to take action indicating that we have approval to do it, once we know that there's absolutely no impact for doing so, no negative impact, let's put it that way. No negative impact, then that'll allow us to proceed, because we do believe that there is no negative impact. But would that verify your Woodtrust?
Okay, then I would make the motion, the committee recommends and I move to make the motion to pay the remaining Woodtrust Bank loan balances for Daktronics video display board in the amount of three ninety-one eight eighty-nine from the District's General Fund. All sponsor and advertising revenues from the video display board will be deposited into the Quadplex and Stadium Sustainability Fund. And that's based on no, zero, or zero impact on the school district in regards to tax purposes.
Zero negative impact.
Negative impact to the school district.
You got all those minutes, Marins?
I do.
Okay, we have motion in the second to pay the remaining Woodtrust Bank loan balance for the Daktronics video display board in the amount of three ninety-one eight eighty-nine from the District's General Fund. All sponsor and advertising revenues from the video display board will be deposited into the Quadplex and Stadium Sustainability Fund. And this is contingent on the zero negative impact on the school.
Or doing so is how it would be.
Okay, doing so would have a...
So let's clarify that three ninety-one, nothing for the district, and maybe take one, still one of the tax here.
Right. That's the right.
Okay. Motion second, we will call on that, please, Marins.
Mrs. Royal?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Head?
No.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Prings?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes. And with that, we did have some updates as far as copies of invoices for work at the Quadplex and some special ed sophomores and our reading officers in my favor who the copy fee for purchasing. Our future agenda item will be the Trade Home Selection Committee meeting, or Selection Committee meeting on April fourth, and Katie will be attending that in my place. And with that, the committee recommends I move, or I move the balance of minutes for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the meeting minutes of the digital service committee for March seventh, twenty-twenty-two, although in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Period. John, move on to personnel services.
Okay. Personnel services met on March seventh at six twenty-seven PM. We had no public comment. And from that meeting, we have thirteen consent agenda items, and I'm going to be holding out number eight for clarification later. Number one, the committee recommends I move to approve the one non-represented certified staff appointment. Number two, the committee recommends and I move to approve the five professional staff Three, the committee recommends and I move to approve the thirteen support staff appointments. Four, the committee recommends and I move to approve the four professional staff resignations. Five, the committee recommends and I move to approve the four support staff resignations. Six, the committee recommends and I move to approve the twelve professional staff retirements. And I would just like to say that adding up all the years of experience with those twelve professional staff retirements, we have three hundred and forty-five years of experience that's leaving the district, and that gives us an average of about twenty-nine years per person. And I think the most was, one person had thirty-seven years working for the district, which is awesome.
I'll second.
Seven, the committee recommends and I move to approve the four support staff retirements. Nine, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy three eighty animals in the school for second reading. Ten, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy three eight thirty-point-two facility use policy for the Rapids Area Sports Complex for second reading.
Sandy?
Yes.
Three eighty was held out as part of PS eight?
Yes, I held that out in the beginning.
But you decided eight and then?
Yep, but you just referenced eight when you said...
I'm sorry, no, eight is out.
Yep, sorry.
No. Beep beep back up, no eight. Okay, what was the last one I did?
So you did nine, I think you're on ten.
Okay. The, number ten, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy three eighty point two facility use policy for the Rapids Area Sports Complex for second reading. Eleven, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy three eighty use of school facilities for second reading.
Eight thirty?
Sandy, I think those are eight thirty, not three thirty.
He just read them.
You what?
It's eight thirty, not three eighty.
Eight thirty?
Yeah.
Point two was...
He said three eighty.
Oh.
We got three eighties and eight thirties, so...
Okay. That would be eight thirty. Twelve, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy eight thirty point one facility use policy for the Performing Arts Center for second reading. Everyone knew I was dyslexic. Thirteen, the committee recommends and I move to approve changing the building and grounds receiving secretary position to eight hours per day for every workday. There's just much more work than they can get done in the few hours that they have each day.
I have a second, I will move now the, okay, you got the motion in second to approve PS one to PS seven and PS nine to PS thirteen, although in favor, please say aye.
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 Both. Period.
On number, on three eighty point one, therapy dogs in school for second reading, what we want to do is we want to change it that before we had listed about five different places that we would do the certification, and that was too limiting. So we're going to change it to only therapy dogs that hold the current title of American Kennel Club, AKC Therapy Dog, or that are registered slash certified by one of the national therapy dog organizations, certified by the AKC, will be approved. Information on certified organizations can be found on the American Kennel Club website. So we're going to change eight thirty point one PS eight to the committee...
Three eighty.
Did I do that again?
It's an eight thirty this time.
Wow. Okay. Don't ever do the eights in the three's again. Okay. Eight, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy three eighty point one, therapy dogs in schools with the language changes discussed concerning AKC certified organizations.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve PS eight, the language changes, although in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Period.
And then we had an update on the employees' assistance program. It's pretty much the same as other years. Activity types, we had fifty-one percent video sessions and twenty-three percent in-person sessions. Primary presenting problem, we had thirty-eight percent anxiety and depression, twelve percent stress, and thirty-two percent others. And client type for this was employees sixty-three percent and dependents thirty-four percent. And with that, I move that the minutes of the March seventh Personal Services Committee be approved as printed.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the meeting minutes of the Personal Service Committee of March seventh, twenty-twenty-two, although in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Period. Unless they're approved. Thank you, Sandy. I'd like to move on to agenda referrals and information.
Okay, I have something, John. So in two thousand nineteen, I made a referral to address teacher mental health and why it matters. I had attended a session at the State School Board Convention and there were some things that really were happening here in Wisconsin Rapids, and we needed to look at that. One of them was retaining quality staff and hiring new staff, so they talked about issues and possible solutions, so we talked about doing that. Then in March, COVID came. Then in July twenty-twenty, Larry had made a similar suggestion for ways to address students' anxiety and stress, and then I again said about the mental health of the teachers and the stress. So it seems like we've been talking about these things since two thousand nineteen, and I think because of the pandemic, progress has stalled, we're kind of just into that. So I guess right now, what I would like, I would like suggestions, I'm not sure how to make the proposal, but I'd like to know how we can move it along in a positive direction, because I do really have concerns about staff retention and attracting new staff if we don't really, can't find a way to do something.
Well, Mary, we have subcommittees of the boards that tackle specifications. I think this might be a good place to have a subcommittee established that would meet and, you know, maybe meet with certain members of the staff. I'm not sure about, you know, what that would look like, but I think the subcommittee could figure out what they wanted to see.
So the sub, so a board subcommittee could meet with staff?
I think so. I mean, we've had, we've had the insurance committee that's met with staff to get their input. We have the CCI committee, I think, meets with staff. I think a lot of the subcommittees meet with staff. So is there anyone that feels a passion to do it? I would like to be a part of that.
I would too.
Larry?
Yeah, I would too.
Okay. And we'll report back to the board and, you know, see if we can come up with some ideas and maybe to have some voices heard. I know prior to Act Ten, when we had negotiations, that was a time that we sat in a room and talked about issues, whether it was involving negotiations or not, it was a time to talk. And we don't do that anymore, so I think that many times we don't necessarily hear some of the staff's concerns. This might be an opportunity for us to...
So would we have to then post that as a meeting of the board? Would that be public?
Yes. Yeah, because we'd have three members, Larry, Mary, and John Prings, is what I'm understanding. And so what we can do is, Marine can coordinate with the three of you to find an open afternoon or early evening or two, identify a location and, you know, there wouldn't be any agenda, I wouldn't think, unless you wanted to see some kind of agenda. And then the protocol will just be to sit and listen.
So how would we get the staff? Will we just ask them to?
Well, we can send out, we can do, if you want to do one night teaching staff, one night support staff or grab bag, if you, whatever parameters you put around it, we communicate and...
One of the things that I thought of is there a way that, you know, you could do an after-school thing just in a building. And it wouldn't have to be all three, you know, you could just have one person go and post in the building that there's going to be a board member there at four o'clock, and if you'd like to stick around in the cafeteria and chat, stick around, you know, just informal.
I think there would be something that we could open up all board members if they're comfortable to do that.
And that's, I was going to just say that. I was going to just say that, maybe instead of having a committee and maybe doing it.
The committee would just be to maybe organize it.
Well, may, well.
You know, then they have a, maybe a sign up to say who would want to, you know, who would like to go to Washington? Who would like to go to Grant? Who would like to go to like Grant? And then coordinate a time and then it would, we would at least know that it was happening and that it was somewhat coordinated and that, you know, nobody's left open.
So we could start with a committee and then have everybody doing it?
That was my thought.
Okay.
And then we could report the information back to the committee and they can compile it and do what they'll need after we find out.
Bring back what we heard at each listening sessions in that building and questions that were brought, comments that were brought, thoughts of what they might need, and we bring that back to the committee.
So if we.
Do you want to schedule something in each building?
Well, I'm just wondering, so if, if we go one-on-one to a building, does that have to be noticed then? So if we have a, if we have a subcommittee that meets the three of us, that has to be posted. But that specifically wouldn't be what we're going to be doing. That would be organizing pretty much how we're going to do it. So it isn't, I mean, public isn't, it doesn't matter if there's, there's really not going to be a lot of discussion for public. Right? I'm just wondering. And if there is, they might have, they might have an idea.
Well, maybe there's two staff members that stick around, maybe there's twenty-five, I mean, I don't know. We haven't done that in years ago.
I know, I remember.
We attempted to do it and it seemed like it was maybe a little bit hit and miss, like we didn't get to all the buildings. And I don't want to do that again. I want to see us if we're going to go down this path to get in all the buildings and heck, even a central office. And, I mean, everybody's input's important, so.
The problem will be though is that if it's, if it's just open-ended and more than one board member shows up, then it should be posted. So unless you want to have, if each board member select a building and then we figure out how to fill in the other ones and only do them solo, otherwise they need to be posted. Because, I mean, you could, you just don't want to go down that path, no. And so, um, I don't think there's any stated agenda. Clearly, you're not taking any action. But if it's something where who's ever available can go to Grant on this night and then think on that night and Rams on this night. If you wanted to do that, then in my opinion, we select dates. We, and Marine can do that with each of you based off of a calendar, you know, not, if you want a calendar, tonight, we can do that too. Since it's a little bit of a shorter agenda, it might, we could maybe just look at our calendars and figure it out. But then we post each of those. Uh, you know, board listening session with staff at Grant, board listening session with staff at Washington. And rotate that around on certain dates. And then if two of you can show, fine. If all seven of you show, fine.
So can, can we include support staff in that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, I, I see no problem with public showing up to it. It's just an opportunity to sit and talk to staff. If the public has a concern that they want to come and sit and listen, by all means, you know, they would hear that same message. I, I guess to me, it's about hearing the staff members' concerns and how do we do it in two thousand twenty-two? I mean, it's nice to get back with people again. We've been distant for a couple of years.
Another thing that I would like to see is that sometimes, um, if we stay with the schedule, you know, Tuesday night, Tuesday, whatever time that one school and there's a staff member, they really would like to communicate with us, but they're not available. They can go to another listening session and hear from school. They don't necessarily have to want to let that school work where they're, where they're in.
That's correct.
I don't look at this as anyone to blame. We've had a historic challenge and then another one gets dealt with us. And I think it's a fine tuning of what we do and, uh, increase communication. I think that would be helpful.
So, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I like the idea of, I think, to cover all buildings, maybe have one or two board members. Maybe one board member cover all buildings. And if I'm here after next month, I would definitely like to play an involvement in that. Because I think it'd be good to reach all buildings. And I don't, I guess I don't see the need on more than maybe just one board member going to a respective building just so we can cover all bases. But that's something I would certainly, certainly think's a good idea.
And frankly, I don't, don't get into buildings very often. It's nice to go back into an elementary building. It's nice to go back into the secondary buildings. And we don't spend a lot of time in the buildings, so it's kind of nice to go.
I know when I went in for me, for reading, it was just to get in there and see what they did and to see the kids. I mean, yeah, you, we really missed a lot over the, the last two years.
No doubt. Okay, well, we can start coordinating that. Um, are there any other agenda referrals or information requests?
Can we just make sure that we got the right plan? Because I don't want to make assumptions that you guys don't want me to make. So we'll identify in evening that there'll be at least one board member at each of our facilities from, I don't know, between now and say the end of the school year.
Okay.
Correct? And then whoever can attend will, so these will be posted public meetings with no agenda.
I would think it would be a good idea to start while folks are still there. Because once you go home and, you know, start your evening activities, it's going to be hard to get people back.
Yeah, we'll have you there probably five minutes or so after students are dismissed. So elementary ballpark, three, four to five-ish, and secondary buildings would be like three o'clock-ish.
And we'll just pick randomly, because I know I couldn't make Thursday and Friday ever, but I know we won't have all the same day one week, right?
So you always do them one a week?
I think we could do multiple things a week. You know, maybe we'll just put a calendar out and see what we get for signups. So if we have enough, okay.
We could do this before, when we do listening session, I just shared a calendar, the day on the U of T campus, decide what you want to do. And I think we've got a new one board member per building and then write that information back to the board as.
I agree.
Yep.
Look at, and just to kind of look at a calendar, we can start it in late April and kind of have a thirty-day window or whenever we want to start it. But I don't imagine wanting to start it in the next couple of weeks with spring break coming up here.
Correct.
Maybe mid-April to late April and then have a good month to make sure we have our buildings covered.
And now we're talking one board member per building?
I think that makes sense.
I think so.
Then they would not need to be publicly posted.
Right, I think that's, and if one board member, I mean, if between us something came up, I could call somebody and say, can you go? I can't make it.
Okay, that's no problem.
With the bigger schools, you might have to adapt that a little bit.
Well, maybe you do it twice, you know, you go and, and you have to turn it up. People say, you know, it would be nice to do this again.
Right.
Start up another.
I was questioning that, if you, if you're on the same committee that one of these sessions has been.
Right.
Right, that's why we need to know if it's going to be a one board member per school thing. And then it's one, one per school, okay.
We're just taking notes and, I mean, we're not going to be giving them any, tell them we're going to do this or that. We're going to listen and write it down and come back as a group.
Correct.
At that time, we'll probably.
Individual board members can't do much of anything until all seven of you act at some capacity.
That's right.
I think that, that makes a lot of sense. So we'll, um, when, once we identify what a calendar is, then that'll be communicated out. And it'll be on you. If you can't make the one you said you could make, to find an alternate. And we know that it's one board member per building per time slot.
Yep.
And then they'd be filled if necessary, but then there's no need to, um, post and so forth. And then I would argue, depending upon what this calendar looks like, there'll be an opportunity for a report back to, um, the rest of the board, which would occur at a regularly posted meeting. And so that maybe would be made.
Maybe just put in your new business.
Yeah.
Is there a way, um, because we said, you know, we can, we'll definitely include support staff. Should we just save food service and have a certain one for food service and for custodians? Or should we just have them at that school?
At that school.
Do you think? I'm, I'm fine, I'm just, I'm just, you know, questioning if that's.
Well, we could include, that's people, so they could maybe go over there. I mean, that.
Are you thinking that support staff and certified staff would be different in terms of?
Uh, no, I'm just, I want to make sure that they're, they're, they're included wherever we have them. And if, if food service is only there in the morning, no, it's, the time-wise is going to be, they're going to have to come back. Is there one time when we could say these food, I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking, I don't know what the best.
I think with that question, it's better to just win at the end of the debate if they have that much.
That they would want to come back. That's fine. That's absolutely fine with me, right?
I would agree. And I think we can communicate that you're going to be at school buildings. And if there's folks from central storage, they can go to Rams or Reed.
That's a good idea.
Or any building, to be honest with you. So I do think that, I mean, there's limits to.
That's a good, I like that.
A flexible way.
Right, I just want to cover, I just want to cover it all, but I.
So what I think we'll do is, once we know the schedule, it would be an all-staff email, which includes every single human being we employ. And it'll simply say, board members, individual board members are, you know, have, listening to staff concerns at these buildings and these locations at this, at these times. Uh, feel free to show up at your own building or a different building or something that works with your schedule or not at all. And we'll publicize it in that manner, it'll be a district email, and then you'll be offered a.
One question to follow up, do you want to do anything with substitutes? Done incentives for substitutes? I don't know.
I mean, I.
In terms of what you're trying to do.
No, I, I don't know.
If you, one separate one for them perhaps here at NABE or?
Because their issues, I suppose, they would be different than ours, but our, but yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Some are, some are.
Yeah.
We could invite subs to join a building or we could have a separate session for subs. But I do think this should be included.
I do too.
I think you want them to be for that.
Exactly.
I think a separate session, I just, I mean, initial prep would be beneficial.
So we could do this latest one, then a catch-all, you know, here at East NABE or something like that for subs or anybody else that missed out on an opportunity in the building.
And that would be any sub, that would be any sub at all, that's, that's, right?
Correct.
I, I, I think that's a really good discussion. I'm glad I brought it up because I'm not upset that we haven't done it. We just, everything just seemed to fall into place and, and we just, it just got, got, got lost.
Well, until recently, it didn't make a lot of sense to have people wandering through buildings.
Well, no, we, for two years, we wouldn't have done it at all.
Yep.
And like I said, there wasn't that much time between when we started the discussion and COVID hit, so. Great.
Okay, is there anything else? If not, we can move on to legislative, John. Let's do this one, Troy.
All right, thank you, John. So a couple of things to look at in terms of the, um, the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two legislative, um, session recently wrapped up last week. So a couple of things to, to look at in that regard and then, and then we'll go from there. So the Senate met last, last week, March ninth, um, for, they rejected the governor's special session and they passed a slew of K through twelve related bills in their last session day. The governor's special session call was gavelled in and immediately adjourned by both houses of the legislature. Governor Evers had called a special session on a plan to spend some of the state's projected budget surplus on a hundred and fifty dollar refund to every Wisconsin taxpayer and seven hundred and fifty million for schools. Um, following that, the Senate launched into a large calendar of bills on the last floor day before adjourning for the session. The Senate approved a number of bills, including a parental bill of rights, unlimited expansion of voucher schools and breaking up MPS, among others that I'll talk about in a minute. Bills that were previously passed by the Assembly and passed in identical form by the Senate yesterday are cleared to move on to the governor's desk for his signature or his veto. If a bill had not passed, the Assembly or, or the Senate approved a different version, those bills are likely dead for this current session. So thirteen bills, um, coming out of last week's last session day, thirteen bills are heading to the governor's desk for his signature or for his, um, approval or veto. Um, the first is Assembly Bill eighty-two relating to cardiac arrest. Um, this pertains to information about sudden cardiac arrest during youth athletic activities. This passed on a voice vote. The second bill was Assembly Bill one twenty-two pertaining to micro schools. This passed on a voice vote as well. Um, for a little clarity on this, this bill creates a statutory definition of a micro education pod that refers to a private educational program provided to between two and ten family units and adds that term to all current statutes that refer to a home-based private educational program. Homeschooling, in essence, for that, for that bill. Um, the next bill, Assembly Bill four forty-six, pertains to reading readiness. Um, this bill, reading readiness assessments and granting rulemaking, rule-making authority passed, um, a nineteen to twenty vote. Um, WASB did come out in opposition of this bill prior. Um, but this bill is nearly identical to Senate Bill four fifty-four, which was vetoed by the governor earlier this session. The only difference is that Assembly Bill four forty-six, as it is amended, deletes a provision that funds assessment costs under the bill out of an existing state appropriation for that purpose. Instead, it substitutes a requirement the governor must allocate five million in federal funds received under the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one. Allocate those funds to DPI for grants to school boards and independent charter schools to fund professional development for teachers and implementation costs related to providing the assessments and interventions required by the bill. Um, the next bill heading to the governor's desk is Assembly Bill nine oh three. This pertains to gifted and talented programs. Um, programs for gifted and talented pupils passed by a vote of twenty to twelve. WASB had opposed this bill on the front end. This bill imposes new data collection and reporting requirements on school districts related to gifted and talented programs and subjects ten percent of school districts each year to an audit of their gifted and talented programs. It also, um, calls for a requirement of DPI to include on school and school district report cards a determination of whether or not a district has complied with the requirements, um, related to these programs. The next bill is Assembly Bill nine sixty-two, you, um, pertaining to landscape analysis participation. UW system institution participation in Department of Public Instruction initiated landscape analysis of educator preparation programs. This passed on a voice vote and WASB did not have a, a position on the front end for this bill. Um, the next bill, Assembly Bill nine sixty-three, pertains to parent rights, um, pertaining to rights reserved to a parent or guardian of a child. The minority party introduced an amendment to include private schools under the bill, um, which this was rejected on a party line vote. Um, WASB had opposed this bill on the front end, um, joining Democrats in opposition of the bill last week. Um, the next bill, Assembly Bill nine sixty-five, pertains to DPI reports. Um, looking at the components, methods, and formulas the DPI uses to publish, um, school and school district accountability reports and granting rulemaking authority. This passed on a vote of twenty to ten. WASB was also in opposition of this bill. Um, the next bill, I won't go into a ton of detail, but it, there's Assembly Bill pertaining to reorganizing the Milwaukee School District that was introduced, um, as well as two other Assembly Bills pertaining to charter schools and charter school boards. Assembly Bill nine seventy pertains to choice income limits. Um, this bill calls for eliminating income limits for parental choice programs, eliminating pupil participation limits for the statewide parental choice program, private school tuition charged to a pupil participating in a parental choice program and creating an education expect, expense reimbursement program for the two thousand twenty-three school year and the summer of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, this bill passed as well. Um, final, the final two bills, there was an Assembly Bill nine seventy-five on substitute teachers. Um, this called for substitute teacher permits issued by the DPI. This passed by a vote of twenty-five to five and WASB did come out in support of this bill. Um, the last bill, Assembly Bill nine ninety-five, um, that passed was pertaining to an opt-out for facial coverings. Um, just to briefly mention more on the election front, there are a slew of, a growing list of lawmakers who have decided, A, either against seeking reelection, B, they're running for something else, or they were re, uh, one was redistricted out, um, since the People's Maps Commission was adopted, or Governor Evers' maps were adopted. So just to kind of give you a brief outlook, um, one congressman, seven state senators, and thirteen, um, members of the Assembly are either retiring, running elsewhere, or, um, or one of them was redistricted out. Um, so that, that really takes us to, um, the, the last thing. Um, there is no statewide Supreme Court race or, um, superintendent race on the ballot in April, but it is an important election. There's a lot of important, um, races on our ballot, school board, town board, county board, city races. Grand Rapids has a referendum. Um, certain precincts of Portage County have their executive race. So there's a lot of important, um, certain precincts in our area have the executive race. So there's a lot of important races on our ballot. And myvotewisconsin.gov is a great resource, and I just checked over the weekend, they have, the sample ballots for April are now available. So you can go up there and, and take a look at those. Um, so those are available and also I would urge you to watch the interviews, read the questionnaires and, and listen to the radio, um, coming up here because there's some great opportunities to get to know the candidates. Um, and that, that takes us into April.
Okay, thank you for the report, Troy. Next, we'll move on to approval of the bills.
Okay, I would make a motion that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, that the receipts be noted and bills paid as printed. We have roll call, please, Brian.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a question, though. Um, I, I read the bills every month. And, um, we energies always, and we always have in the past, um, all the bills, it's been identified bill building or school or whatever. But in January and February, when it comes to water work and lighting commission, it just says by district, by district, by district. You can't tell what school or whatever. Can we go back to the way it was?
I will look into that, I, I'm not sure why there would have been.
Okay. Okay.
Is it just Waterworks and Lighting?
Yeah, just Waterworks and Lighting, because there's always a, you know, big long page and I specifically look for a couple of things that just, that all says district, district, district.
I would, this is the fact that we have a new person in AP.
Oh, okay, okay.
And it may be a training issue, so I'll, I'll look into it.
And then I was looking at that, you know, I went back to see when this started. If you could just let me know what the payment of, in December was for Waterworks and Lighting Commission? Thank you.
Okay, we can now move into new bills. Item A, possible action on employee, appointments, resignation, retirement request. Brian, anything new you can add?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Item B, discussion and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, establishment of escrow account with respect to the defeasance of certain general obligation refunding bond series twenty twenty-one.
Okay. I think Marine has provided you with a final two thousand twenty-two debt defeasance summary document. Do you, if I can see that? Okay. So what the, the proposal is that we would remove, pay for that last year, the two thousand twenty-four or two thousand forty-one debt service payment. And that amount is two million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And we would deface that, meaning that, that would be set aside in a defeasant account or in an escrow account and that would be paid in, I believe, two thousand twenty-eight or roughly that time of, that, that, that period of time. By doing that, the district would save eight hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars over the year, over the life of that specific issue, that two thousand forty-one issue. And on top of that, next year, the district would receive seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars in additional state aid, which will help lower our property taxes next school year. So it's kind of a win-win. We get, we remove this from the, our, the district's balance sheet. We're, we're saving on future expense in regards to debt, debt service and we're receiving more state aid next school year.
Needs that?
Then I'd make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, establishment of an escrow account with respect to the defeasance of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds series twenty twenty-one dated August two, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. They have a motion in second to approve a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the general obligation refunding bond series twenty twenty-one dated August two, two thousand twenty-one. Do you have a roll call, please?
Mr. Train?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
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 Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Looking ahead on the calendar, this week we have post-session meeting Monday and Wednesday. And then after that, spring break and the morality of April. So with that, we're there. Good to everyone.